Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Town Hall and Candidate Forum with candidates for the election of the 2021-2022 Student Member of the Board of Education. Welcome to all of you joining our broadcast from home. My name is Jeremy Brown, and I serve as the Regional Advisor for the Frederick County Association of Student Councils. This group of student leaders meets regularly throughout the year, advocates for their fellow students, and learns the responsibilities of leadership. This group is also charged by the Board of Education to select a student member of the Board. Tonight, we have five candidates for consideration by the secondary students of Frederick County. They have been through a paper application review and approval process. They have also delivered speeches and been part of question and answer sessions with students from across the county. Tonight, we begin the public portion of the election, our Town Hall and Candidate Forum. After the program this evening, the voting window will open. All students will then have an opportunity to review the candidate information prior to casting their vote. The resumes, application questions and answers, as well as the recording of this evening's program will be available on the FCPS website under the Board of Education tab. Student Member of the Board Election is the drop-down menu item. Voting will be online. There is a URL and a QR code that our students will see on Channel 18, posters in the buildings, and available through activities they will get in their social studies classes. The active window for voting will be from January 15th today through February 5th. On February 18th, the Frederick County Association of Student Councils will hold their regular General Assembly meeting. At this meeting, representatives from each middle and high school will cast their school's votes for the candidate with the most votes from that school. The process is similar to the Electoral College system used to elect our president and vice president in the United States and allows for a more equitable distribution of votes, so each feeder pattern of schools has some influence on the outcome. This is the process that has been developed to allow over 22,000 students to participate in the selection of their representative to the Board of Education. Now for this evening's activities. We begin with the Town Hall portion of our night. Each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves and give their speech, and then we will go to questions sent from students. After questions, we will move to the forum portion of the evening. Let's meet the candidates. They are alphabetically: Janelle Blessinger Jim, a junior from Urbana High School; Dominic Phillips Moore, a sophomore from Frederick High School; Quinn Schultes, a junior from Oakdale High School; Sam Stars, a junior from Oakdale High School; and Jacob Winter, a sophomore from Brunswick High School. Do any of our candidates have questions about the process? Very good, then let's begin with our introductory candidate speeches. Ms. Jim, you're first.
Hello, FCPS. My name is Janelle Blessinger Jim, a junior at Urbana High School, and one of your candidates for next to a member of the Board of Education. To start off, I'd like to talk a little bit about what inspired me to run. I was inspired by those like Mia Martinez, the current SMOP of FCPS, action activists who have been leading the charge or change in our county, and most importantly, the students of FCPS. You all have been the ones who inspire me every single day to be better and fight for what is right, so for that, I say thank you. My platform is written by the students of FCPS and for the students of FCPS. I spend hours talking with countless students about issues in our county that bother them, things they want to see changed, and areas they want to see addressed. This led me to five points that came up the most, and from then on, I worked with even more of you to formulate a plan and adjust these points. I'm running on a platform of mental health, diversity, coronavirus awareness, technology, and student advocacy. On specifics of this plan for mental health, I want to push for increased mental health resources, education, advocacy for students to both de-stigmatize mental illness and allow those with mental illness to obtain easier help through FCPS. Not only that, but on my diversity point, I want to push for more programs to integrate our able-bodied and disabled students, add more curriculum on different minority groups, provide more support for LGBT+ students, and have more cultural events. Onto my third point, I want to push for greater student advocacy and transparency when it comes to coronavirus awareness, as strict plans and guidelines to the eventual implementation of the hybrid model. Onto my fourth point, I want to advocate for greater funding towards the technology in our school system to provide a modern, innovative way of learning to our students, as well as to bridge gaps for students who lack technology or network access. My last point outlines greater student advocacy in the Board of Education, the creation and promotion of a student testimony section during the meetings to allow for students to speak their minds on issues that matter to them. This platform was made with the students of FCPS and a plan that I hope will ensure a better future for us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Janelle. Mr. Phillips Moore.
Good evening. My name is Dominic Phillips Moore. I am a sophomore at Frederick High School, and like all of you, I've been affected with the many changes brought upon us from the pandemic. Whether you're a sixth-grade student at Oakdale Middle or a junior at TJ High, it is essential that we continue to support our students in this very difficult, unprecedented time. Have you picked up a textbook and questioned the validity of the material present in connection with social injustice? If you answered yes, then it is time to change our curriculum to be more inclusive. As a student, the curriculum only teaches a small portion of diversity and not the full picture. My goal is to not only stand up for those who look like me, but to those who don't as well. I will dedicate myself to working with the Racial Equity Committee to ensure that there is equity in the curriculum for all subjects and include more diversity. A significant part of the decision-making process of the Board of Education is the current student member of the Board, Mia Martinez. She's reached out to students and obtained data and effectively have represented our students' voices on the matters such as reopening schools. However, there is one thing that has not been obtained yet, and that is a vote on the Board of Ed from the SMOP. This is favorable among many students. In fact, out of the 30 FCPS students surveyed, seven were for partial voting rights, and 23 were in favor of full voting rights. I never thought I'd see the day as a student, nor as a student advocate, that 36 out of 37 students surveyed said that virtual learning caused their mental health to deteriorate. Furthermore, students have expressed a desire to have more access to socially-emotional learning materials, guidance counselors, and mental health professionals. I'm willing to put in the work to provide more access to mental health resources to those who are struggling by encouraging the implementation of more education of mental health. Thank you for your time and consideration. I hope you will listen carefully to the platforms presented and be an informed voter.
Thank you, Dominic. Now we move to Ms. Schultes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Quinn Schultes, and I'm a junior at Oakdale High School. Here, I'm the Vice President of Oakdale's SGA and am involved in multiple other clubs. Before discussing my platform, I want you all to get to know a little bit about me. I've lived in Frederick County since I was in third grade. I'm a youth leader at my church, am a part of the Leadership Academy at Oakdale, and an intern at the Public Health Program. I'm so grateful for all the wonderful opportunities I've had here in Frederick County, and I'm grateful to now be running for SMOP and to represent all the students at FCPS. Now for my platforms. My platforms include focusing on students' mental health, social justice issues, and returning back to school safely in the midst of COVID-19. First, I want to discuss mental health. The National Alliance on Mental Health Illness says that 1 in 6 youth from ages 6 to 17 in the United States have a mental health disorder. These are just the numbers of students who have been diagnosed. There are thousands who struggle in silence. I believe that schools have a responsibility to guide students in improving their mental health and to give them resources to aid them in their mental health struggles, such as brain breaks for students, assemblies that encourage students to reach out if they're struggling with their mental health, and having contracts with helpline companies or paying for psychologists to be involved in the schools. The second part of my platform focuses on promoting awareness of social justice issues in our schools. Many students and people in general are not aware of the social justice issues in our community. Therefore, it is important that our schools educate students even from a young age about these issues. Every single school in the county should have a club or a program that focuses on these issues, and these issues should be discussed constantly in class discussions, so these are not issues that are overlooked simply because people are scared to discuss them. The final part of my platform is going back to school safely in person during the COVID-19 pandemic. The American Academy of Pediatrics has stressed the importance of going back to school for students' social and emotional development. In-person school is very important for students. However, with the pandemic, it must be done safely and in a way that matches the CDC's protocol, which I will work for and will work with the board members to do this if I become SMOP. It is important to me that I represent all students in FCPS and ensure that their needs are being met, including the needs of their guardians and families. With my platform, I hope to create a safe space for students in schools where they feel they are being heard and understood and can grow to their full potential. Thank you.
Thank you, Quinn. We now move on to Mr. Stars.
Hey, everyone. My name is Sam Stars, and I'm a junior at Oakdale High School. I'm part of Oakdale's track team, SGA, Leadership Academy, and Students for Environmental Action. But most importantly, I'm passionate about improving the school system, and that's why I'm running for student member of the Board. As the sole student representative on the Board of Education, the SMOP is responsible for advocating for students and voicing opinions on their behalf. In times like these, student voices are more important now than ever, and the SMOP is one of the best mediums of achieving change at the county level. Unfortunately, the SMOP has often gone unknown by students. Throughout middle school, for example, I was astonished by how few of my classmates were familiar with the role of the SMOP. If elected as the next SMOP, I would further the efforts towards increased student interaction online by our current SMOP and communicate with as many students as possible. Should I be elected as the next student member of the Board, I would advocate for the student body and the issues important to you, among many of which outside virtual learning are mental health awareness and racial injustice. Poor mental health is a growing issue for students. As SMOP, I would advocate for increased mental health resources and education. Similar to mental health, racial injustice around the country has been made more apparent in the past year. It is the duty of organizations like FCPS to ensure equality of opportunity and protection from discrimination and other unjust issues regarding race. This means actively enforcing anti-racist policy. As SMOP, I would work with you, the students, towards the improvement of these issues within our school system. In our ever-changing world and rapidly diversified county, FCPS needs a SMOP who will effectively communicate with the entire student body. If elected, I will make my absolute best effort to do so. In the meantime, I want to hear from all of you, so I've set up different channels of communication. If you want to ask me questions, voice your concerns, you can feel free to message me on Twitter, Instagram, or email me. You can find my usernames for each and my campaign video. Together, we can fight the most pressing issues in our school system. I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. We now hear from Mr. Winter.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jacob Winter. I'm a sophomore student at Brunswick High School, and I'm a candidate for student member of the Board of Education. If elected as SMOP, my sole exclusive goal would be to act as a conduit between the will of the student body and meaningful change through interaction with the Board of Education. To do so requires a plan which takes into account the diverse and wide-ranging opinions and issues of the student populace. Representation must span from kindergartners to seniors, from those in the most rural areas of the county to those in Frederick City, so that every individual is able to have a direct impact on their education. I will generate a feedback loop, which ensures that students' concerns are discerned and brought to the attention of the Board. I want to make sure that the education system is tailored to the needs of every student. Most importantly, this means letting students have input as to their individual learning experience. It also entails eliminating redundancy in curriculum and standardized testing, allowing flexibility in schedule formation, such that schedules reflect each student's aptitudes and abilities, addressing issues of racial injustice, and increasing the number of counselors, both for the sake of increasing mental health resources and to ensure individual attention is provided to every student. One of the most important issues is SMOP voting rights. When over 22,000 students elect an individual to represent their interests, that representative should have a legitimate say. Simply put, the largest stakeholder in the education system deserves some power over policy that will ultimately affect them the most. That is the precise reason that if elected, you will ultimately be the factor that decides what I advocate to the Board of Education. I will not push a personal agenda, and I will not bring anything to the attention of the Board that does not have the backing of the student body. If you believe in the power of your own voice, the legitimacy of your own ideas, and that you should have a say in the education, which encompasses 12-plus years of your life, please consider voting for me, because I'll work for you, so the education system works for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Thank you, everyone. We're now going to move into the Town Hall section, which is a little different this year with our virtual setting. Usually, we're gathered in the boardroom, and we have people come forward and ask you questions. We put out that people could email questions in to be asked, and so the people could put the questions in and ask it to go to a specific candidate or open it to anybody who wants to answer it. So we'll kind of follow that same format. This question comes from a ninth-grade student at Catoctin High School, and the question is, "How are you, as a new student member of the Board, going to be able to interact with all the different schools and students?" So who would like to go first? Let's start with... We'll go backwards this time. Jacob, would you like to answer that?
Yeah, sure. So, of course, the most important tool that we can utilize as young adults is social media. I mean, I think that's incredibly a powerful form of interaction between us, but that doesn't solve all problems. I mean, of course, some people are not on social media, especially those who are younger, elementary and middle school students. So to remedy that issue, I would create informational infographics and presentations for schools. I would also strive to extend my outreach past my circle of Brunswick High School and make sure that I'm interacting with students from all across the county via the informational content that I create and then put out to schools across the county, as well as interacting directly and one-on-one, and also through social media.
Thank you. Anybody else want to answer that question? Go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, so like I said, connecting with the students would be my utmost priority as SMOP. And if I were to be elected, I would look for a variety of creative ways to reach out to students, because I think that's the best way to get in touch with as many as possible and as many different students from different areas as possible. So that would include constantly attending SGA meetings, FCAST meetings, just going to FCPS events, talking to people, and then, of course, social media, you know, making interesting videos, just finding different ways to make the county policy interesting and get students excited to be involved in it.
Thank you, Sam. Anybody else with this question? Okay, we're going to move on to the next question, then. This comes from a student at Urbana High School in 12th grade. "As a student on the Board of Education, we will have to speak and work regularly with adults. Are you prepared to be assertive so that your point of view is heard and not looked over?" Let's start this time with Dominic.
To answer that question, I would say yes, I am prepared and willing to use the assertiveness that is necessary to represent the students of FCPS and making sure that the issues are heard. I would say it also takes a strong sense of communication and being able to have professional and mature conversations with board members and making sure that you are bringing issues to the Board and that the Board is taking those issues seriously.
Anybody else like to answer that one? Okay, go on to the next question, then. This question is from an eighth grader at Crestwood Middle School. "What do you think is the biggest problem in Frederick County public schools, and what would you propose to do to fix it?" So let's start with Janelle this time.
I think currently that the biggest problem in Frederick County public schools is our mental health policies. Right now, we are greatly lacking in guidance counselors for our students. The ratio is just way too high for our students to actually get any sort of input or communication with their guidance counselors to obtain help. Not only that, mental health is, you know, greatly declining among those in our age range. It's something that needs to be addressed and needs to be talked about. And then I feel like FCPS definitely does need to work more on, because there are many students that have come to me talking about mental health issues, struggles that they have, and, you know, feeling that there is no way to adequately get help from the system that we are in for a majority of our days from FCPS. So with that, through my campaign, hopefully as your next SMOP, that's something I definitely want to work towards, because mental health is one of the most important things to me as a student, as someone, you know, as someone who lives in a society. Mental health affects every single part of your life, not just school, affects home life, affects your social life. So it's definitely something that I want to work towards, and I feel is the most important when talking about issues in FCPS.
Thank you, Janelle. Anybody else want to take that question?
Yeah, I'll take that question.
Okay, Jacob.
So there are 158 counselors and psychologists in FCPS. When you divide this by the number of students in FCPS, you get a ratio of about 278 to 1. So on the face of it, this isn't that bad. The recommended student counselor ratio per the American School Counselors Association is 250 to 1. But if you dig into this, you realize that 32 of those are psychologists and 126 of them are counselors. So then if you do the ratios, it's quite staggering. The ratio of counselors to students is 349 to 1. The ratio of psychologists to students is 1,375 to 1. So that's when you really recognize that this is the biggest issue in terms of the mental health issues that we face in the county, which are some of the most important. So what we need to do is decrease student counselor ratios and to psychologist ratios, so to allow counselors and psychologists to be proactive in re-engaging with their students instead of reactive or retroactive. And for this, this will allow them to be able to build the relationships that are needed to give ample attention to each and every student and for impactful interaction to occur in the first place. In conjunction with this, or in the absence of this solution in terms of possible budgeting issues, right, we should expand programs such as student service learning. We should expand volunteering opportunities for students struggling with mental health, because it's been psychologically proven that helping others does in fact help you. So with all of that, the biggest issue in FCPS is definitely student mental health, and there are great solutions that we can work towards that will remedy this issue.
Thank you, Jacob. Move on to our next question now. This is from an eighth-grade student at Brunswick Middle, and the question is, "How do you feel about the amount of homework and assignments being given during distance virtual learning?" And Quinn will go to you first on this one.
For this one, I feel it definitely depends on your teachers and the classes you are taking and what grade you are in. But from what I've heard from many students is that it can get overwhelming, because you're already so distracted in the environment you're in, and you're on the computer for four hours a day, and you're not in school technically for as long as you would be if we were in person, but to be staring at a screen for multiple hours a day can be very overwhelming, and then to have more schoolwork on top of that is even more overwhelming. So I definitely feel like in many situations, there is too much work for students in the environment that we are in now. And I hope that as SMOP, if we are still virtual, that I can really express how students feel about that and ensure that teachers are making sure that their students aren't getting too overwhelmed and that the work is appropriate for their grade level.
Thank you, Quinn. Anybody else want to take that one? Okay, we'll go on to the next one. This is from a junior at Oakdale High School. "Do you support weighted classes and weighted GPA being used to compare students? Explain." Sam will go to you on this one first.
Oh, yeah, that's a good question. I think it gets tricky, because, you know, everyone has their own opinion on it. Students especially have very different opinions on it. Personally, I don't know how I feel about it. I think a weighted GPA speaks to... Well, it's supposed to speak to the rigor of classes you're taking. More recently, that might not be shown as much, but I would be interested, if I were to become SMOP, in talking to the students and seeing what they think of it, and if a large number of students agree that it's not the thing to do, then I would be interested in telling the Board that, and yeah, getting that changed.
Okay, thanks, Sam. Anybody else want to take that one? Okay, this next one is from a night... Quinn, were you going to say something? Sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think that from students that I've talked to, that it causes more stress for them, because many students are already stressed with making sure they have good grades and are on top of their school and their sports and family life, and then to feel like they're being compared to other students can feel overwhelming, and I feel like that will just add more stress. And students should really just be focused on doing their best and not comparing themselves to others, because everyone's best is different and it looks different in every situation. So I definitely think, after talking to more students, if I were to become SMOP, that I will talk to the Board about not having weighted GPA.
Thank you. This next question is actually from a freshman at Walkersville High School, and it's directed to Dominic. "Dominic, how do you plan to balance your time, if elected, with the other commitments that you have involved with your school and other organizations?"
So thank you for your question, and I definitely have, since a young age, since I got involved with FCAST in seventh grade, and so since then, I've really had to prioritize a lot. And so using those techniques that I've obtained over the past few years, that has led me into having to manage my time between academics, working a job, and also being involved in not only school student council, but as well as county and state student council. So if elected SMOP, I'm definitely possess the skills that are needed to prioritize my time.
Thank you, Dominic. This question is from a student at... Excuse me, Catoctin High School in 10th grade. "Describe a time when you had to work collaboratively with your school to solve a problem, for example, working with your administrator, teachers, SGA, other student groups, etc." And let's start with Janelle.
Yeah, so I think about this quite a bit. So definitely working with the school, a lot of that would definitely have to come with, you know, with the officer positions I hold in clubs. A lot of times I have to be in a lot of collaboration with different administration when it comes to registering people, a lot of communication. Sometimes there are a lot of issues. Recently, in one of my clubs, we had an issue with registering a number of students when it came to paying fees and such. So a lot of that, you know, I had to deal with, a lot of contacting different students one-on-one, getting a lot of feedback, you know, being very quick with it. Luckily, the situation was resolved, so we were able to kind of go through with that. But yeah, you know, having contact with administration is something that, you know, I'm not a stranger to, you know. Administration knows, I send quite a few emails to them concerning different things that comes to clubs, scholarships, etc. So yeah, you know, contact this administration, nothing that I'm a stranger to, and it's something that I do quite often.
Anybody else want to take that one? Okay. This next question comes from a senior at Frederick High School, and it's for Jacob. "Jacob, how much knowledge do you possess in regards to the needs of an ethnically and socio-economically diverse school such as Frederick High? And if you don't already have that knowledge, how important is it to you to obtain it to better serve your peers?"
Well, it's certainly important to understand that perspective and obtain that knowledge. You know, I'm not sure of the specific diversity of Frederick High or the specific situation, so I'd be more than willing to gain knowledge on the specifics, and I would do so by reaching out to the student if possible, or reaching out to any student at Frederick High and engaging actively in conversation with them to determine the situation. But I will say, on issues of racial injustice and the sort, I think that the best thing that can be done is to start grassroots movements. So for instance, at Brunswick High, we have a Minority Essence Club, I'm a member of it, and we had a great opportunity to engage in a forum on race and reform presented by the National Archives of the United States, and that forum highlighted some issues in terms of curriculum and the very unique perspectives that have been distinctly left out of curriculum and the history of America. And so addressing issues such as curriculum and then otherwise starting grassroots movements to effect change that spread from school to school is really the best thing that can be done, as well as increasing professional learning and staff development for teachers.
Thank you, Jacob. This next question's from a ninth grader at Governor Thomas Johnson High School. It says, "If you are selected and win, how will your impact on FCPS be different than previous members of the Board?" And Quinn will go with you first.
For me, one of the most important things is really getting myself involved with the other schools, such as going to their SGA events or any school-wide events that they may have, is really important for me. So not only getting the input from students from social media or just students in different SGA's, but really getting myself involved in schools as much as I can and meeting the students and their families, so that way I can really get involved with everybody and not just specific SGA students. Um and yeah, just really getting involved that way and also involving myself with kids who are in elementary school. And their families, so that way I can get input from students and families.
All right, I got some people who want to answer this one. Uh Sam, go ahead.
Yeah, so one of the points that uh I I made in my speech was how in middle school, most of my classmates had no idea who the smab even was. Or for that matter, what they even did. And I mean, even in high school before I ran last year, many of my classmates had no idea um who this man was, what they did. And I think that's a huge problem because there is so much potential in the smab's position. And connecting with the students, they can do so much together. So if I were to become smab, I would, I would look to change that dramatically. I would look to, like our current smab Mia, she's done a great job of this, I would be trying to connect with as many people as possible. And just getting my name out there, letting students know that uh they have a voice on the board. And all these problems that they're so passionate about, they have a direct, a direct method of change for them. So if I was like a smab, that was, that would be the first thing I would do.
Thanks, Sam. Uh Janelle?
Yes, um if selected smab, one of the things I feel like that I could push myself to differ from the previous, other previous mobs is that. The fact that I don't want to just be the student member of the Board of Education. I am a student first and foremost. I want to be a person that students can come to with their issues and with their problems. I want to be someone that they can believe in, someone that they can trust, and most importantly, a friend of the students, you know. So I not only want to be a person that you can come to if you're issued, I want to be a person that you can come to regarding F C P S. I want to be a person you can come to with any issues. You know, if anyone needs support, if anyone needs anyone for me to be there and to for me to just have that connection. And that relationship with the student body. Um as was mentioned before, a lot of students don't know who the smab is. And it's just deeply saddening because what if you. Don't feel like you have a say in what goes on in our county, what goes on, you know, the dealing with the Board of Education. You feel like you truly do not have a voice. And I want to ensure to my constituents, those students at F C P S, that they do have a voice through me. And I am a person who worked very hard, extremely hard, to amplify their voice first and foremost.
Thank you, Janelle. Jacob?
Yeah, so I think something that Sam touched on in his speech was that we have to make it interactive and exciting. I mean, policy is not that exciting, but we have to make sure that students know that it's not just something on paper. It's something that is actually affecting their daily lives. Uh you know, like as I said, the students are the largest stakeholder in the education system. It should, it should be tailored to work for them. And they need to understand that that they can make that happen. And so uh to to allow them to understand that is to reach out through all different mediums, but not just social media. But also, like I say, creating content for uh primary schools, okay? Because mostly, well, I would bet most of these students do not have social media or av- or avenues such as that. So creating content that can be pushed out to teachers or that I can present to students of younger ages is incredibly important on top of the social media. On top of uh going to F C P S events, engaging with uh various SGA's and other clubs throughout the county. And having one-on-one conversations with literally everybody possible and staff, uh students foremost, uh parents as well. Getting every single perspective possible and then using that those methods of outreach to determine the most cohesive, coherent and representative opinion that I can present to the board. Uh that's what I would do to stand out as one.
And Dominic?
I would say making sure I'm attending community events, um PTA meetings. Um I know in the past, the focus has been on secondary students. And so making sure that elementary students know that there is a student out there, someone who's older than them, that has their best interest at heart. And so making sure that from a young age, students know about the student member of the board. And knowing that even though they might not grasp some of the concepts, the policies and legislation, making sure that. Um when they get to middle school, they are prepared and so that that way they have an idea of the student member um of the board and what they do.
Thank you, everyone, for that. A couple more questions at town hall before we move to the forum format. Um this one is from a senior at Middletown High School. How can Frederick County Public Schools do a better job to reach out to students whose primary language is not English? Sam, you want to take this one first?
Sure. Yeah, um that's that's a very important thing, especially as our county continues to become more diverse. And we get people from all over the world. It's critical that we are making ourselves capable of educating anyone. Um and I believe the county already has many uh early language learning uh teachers, something to that title. Um but certainly as our county becomes more diverse, we need to recruit more. And uh, you know, provide information in other languages and just make the education system work for anyone, anywhere.
Anybody else want to take that one? Janelle, was your hand up or is that from before? Okay, go ahead.
So um Frederick County is just increasing, is is a diverse place. It's becoming increasingly diverse. As time goes on, there's definitely more people are moving into our county who who um English is not their first native language. I should know, my parents' English is their second language. Um and they do wonderfully at it. But um the whole thing with it is I'm currently, I believe currently right now at Frederick High School, there is um there are classes for those that do speak Spanish. And something I would definitely want to do is implement that into more high schools, just not for, not only Frederick. So we can just, so that we can just enlarge in our scope of students that we can, you know, and mentor our schools that speak different languages. Not only that, but I want to definitely ensure that um with anything coming out from F C P S. Currently, it's in multiple languages like such as our emails, things of videos, opposed captioning, um things that we can just do to greater um. To greater embrace the diversity of all of our students, such as through um such as through um different events, cultural fairs. You know, many different things like that, so that we can both not only embrace students into F C P S, but also embrace the diversity as well.
Very good. Anybody else on that one? Okay, we're now going to move into the candidate forum portion of the evening. This has questions that were pre-written ahead of time uh by me based on information from students. I'll draw the questions from my little bowl here, asking each question, each candidate one question proceeding alphabetically down the line. The questions have been developed with input from middle and high school students. Uh there are a lot of questions in the bowl and a few of them are a little bit repetitive um on some topics like funding, schedules and things like that. Um also, each candidate can make that choice to respond to another candidate's question, but you can do that two times as we go through the rotation. Uh again, we're looking at time now as well in the candidate forum. Your initial response to any question has to be under two minutes. And if you choose to respond to somebody else's question, your response has to be under one minute. And after we get through all that, we'll then move into closing statements, which will be a minute as well. Any questions? So the first question will be for Janelle, and that question is. Most seniors only have one or two courses that are quote-unquote needed in their senior year. What options or ideas do you see as the best to make practical use of senior year time in academics?
Yeah, so being a senior is especially important, especially with the fact that you, you know, most seniors um will be, you know, you're eighteen. After high school, you might be going to college, you might be going into vocational school, a job, um you know, different paths in life. So I definitely want to implement more um more education, more curriculum, some things that matter in the future. Things like, you know, how to file your taxes, things like how to write a resume, um things like how to apply for a job. Things that will really matter in the future, right, and some things that we currently have, that we currently have. Things that, you know, can be life or death for a person, that can be, you know, the the deciding factor of whether you have a roof over your head or not. So I definitely want to teach a lot more practical skills as, you know, I've talked to a lot of students, a lot of them say that, you know, I'm taking this calculus class. But will I really need calculus in the future? Um and that really does depend on student to student. So I definitely want to implement more things like that into our curriculum, so we can better prepare our seniors for a future beyond school. Just because um the difference between high school and college is just, just incredibly diff- you know, it's just incredibly different um experience. And so a lot of times students end up, you know, falling off, you know, they're very used to doing very well in high school and not doing well in college. So a lot of stuff, a lot of things that will help um with, you know, emotional transition towards that um big change in our lives. Things that will help them in terms of practicality and yeah, just to prepare them to have the best future possible. Mister Brown, you're muted.
Anybody want to take that as a select response item? Okay, we'll move on to the next question, which will go to Dominic. Dominic, your question is, what are your thoughts about increasing study abroad or travel study opportunities for F C P S students?
I would say I've spoken to many students, both in my school and outside of my school. And something that's come up uh more recently is that people are going to college and um after high school plan on studying international relations. And so I think it's extremely important um in addition to the world language courses we have in our high schools and some middle schools. Um to make sure that study abroad options are available to those students.
You want to take that? Anybody want to take it as a select? Go ahead, Sam. You have one minute.
Uh I think study abroad programs would be a great opportunity for F C P S to kind of distinguish itself as a, like a leading county. It'd be great to give uh students exposure to different cultures and that sort of thing. But I think it's important that we ensure um equality amongst our schools. Before we uh move on to like a step that big, you know, going overseas with with our schools. I think we need to make sure that um. Everyone at each school is given the same opportunity before we start to expand on other more uh expensive ideas.
Thank you, Sam. Anybody else want to take that one? Okay, we'll move on. Quinn, next question is for you. There are many student voices and views out there. How can the student member of the board ensure that the many different voices are heard and represented?
Yes, this is a great question and one that is very important to me if I were to become smab. I think that it is important that everyone's voices are heard, no matter what school you go to, your background, your age, your gender. Um and I will be doing that through, of course, reaching out to all schools and all students from different grades. Um and I will also ensure that I am reaching out to students from different minorities and ages. So I'm not focusing just simply on uh one area of students. And I just really hope that all students know that their voices are heard and that I'm listening. And that I want to hear what everyone has to say and that everything you say is important.
Anybody want to respond?
Uh yeah, I'll respond to that.
Okay, go ahead, Jacob.
Uh so I think the most important thing is just don't pigeonhole yourself. Don't pigeonhole yourself to a specific age range, uh specific primary or secondary. Don't pigeonhole yourself to just your school, right? All of these things. Make sure that you are uh spreading out content evenly across the entire county, across all age ranges, across all ethnic and racial groups, everything. You want uh, the whole goal of this mob is to uh to be responsive and to create the most representative opinion that you can present uh to the board. So through all, through all of that, uh as well as as I've touched on many different mediums of outreach, that's how uh you can make sure that everyone's voice is heard.
Thank you. Okay, our next regular question goes to Sam. Uh Sam, legislation is being considered to give the student member of the board voting rights in Frederick County. Where do you stand on this idea?
Yes, uh I and I think many other uh students would agree that uh student member voting rights is something our county needs. There are many other counties in our state that have uh student member voting rights. So uh it confuses me as to why we don't yet if we want to be a fourth uh forefronting, leading county. Um because it's so critical to giving the students a true voice in policy and decision-making. Um now, I would say partial voting rights is uh the preferred way to go. Just because there are so many proponents of the student member not having any voting rights, that that would be an even compromise. And also the fact that the student member uh doesn't necessarily know uh policy, fiscal policy, stuff regarding money and wages and that sort of thing.
Thanks, Sam. I see a lot of people are interested in that one. Uh Janelle, did you want to respond? Go ahead.
Voting rights are incredibly important to me and I'm seeing many others in the county. Um the whole purpose of a smab is to be a student member of the board. And if they do not have voting rights and they truly are not a member of the board, as they are not being treated as such. Um not only that, but students come by such a large part of our population, that only makes sense. And it only is right that students do have that voice and they are able to implement change effectively through voting. Um currently in the state of Maryland, there are eight counties that give their smabs either partial or full vote voting rights. And as Sam mentioned beforehand, uh partial is probably most likely the best way to go. I believe in most of these um other counties, the partial vote is nearly almost a full, except for certain situations that are very rare. So yeah, voting rights are incredibly important if you really want to implement the student voice and really want to have an effect in what happens. Um in our county.
Thank you, Janelle. Dominic, you also want to go on this one? Go ahead, you have a minute.
Okay, so last year, I know um House Bill eight-eight-three was sent to the Maryland Legislative Session um for consideration. Um by a student member of the board, Malachi Makin, and Frederick County Association of Student Council's president, Melanie Andrew. Um this bill almost succeeded, however, due to COVID um and the General Assembly ending, it did um fail. And so my goal, if elected, is to um get this bill back in the House. So that students um really are getting their say on the board. And I've spoken with numerous students who have shared their opinions, shared their thoughts. And all of those students um in some way, shape or form are in favor of student member voting rights.
Thank you. All right, let's move on then to the next question, which goes to, I think we're up to Jacob. Jacob, uh dual enrollment courses are becoming more and more popular in Frederick County Public Schools. What do you see as the role of this program in the future? Is it a value for F C P S and its students?
Yeah, so thi- this definitely touches on one of my main platform points, which is making sure that the education system is tailored to the needs of each student. Uh with this is as uh making sure that they have uh every possible opportunity to further their education while in in the in the in F C P S. So dual enrollment programs are incredibly helpful. They're, they help you prepare for college. They help you uh in in ma- many cases get credits that can transfer to college. They also help you get used to that environment, uh as I believe uh one of my fellow candidates touched on. You know, it's a big transition to go from high school to college and this can help you prepare for that. So they're incredibly important. Uh they should be expanded, uh or at least there there should be more attention given to them or presented to the students, rather. Uh so they're an incredibly valuable asset that we have at our disposal to make sure that students are uh exploiting any possible avenue they can in their education.
Thank you, Jacob. Quinn, you wanted to answer that one as well?
Yes, I think that having dual enrollment is extremely important. As Jacob mentioned, it's important for students to have as many avenues as they can to further their education. And to go and reach as many goals as they want. And I know from many students I've talked to, doing dual enrollment is important to them and they look forward to this oppo- opportunity. I definitely think that it should be talked about more in schools because I know many of us didn't have much information about it. And how to do that information and like research ourselves. So I think it's definitely important that we talk about it more and it's really expanded.
Thank you. Um we're now back around, back to Janelle. Janelle, another question for you. This uh seems like it's tailored to you, but it isn't. Uh mental health is being discussed more and more in our society. What role do you think is appropriate for a school teacher to play in that?
Yeah, so um school teachers oftentimes do have a lot more, you know. Uh the difference for these school teachers counselors, obviously, is because different training. But the main difference is that you see your teachers every single day for X amount of hours. Um, versus your counselor, you may only see once or twice a year. Sad enough as it is to say, although that's something definitely we should be increasing, the role of school teachers definitely should be there for the students. We need to push beyond the curriculum, push beyond the learning about limits and about the American Revolution. We need teachers to push more beyond that, because oftentimes teachers are the ones that you trust the most. Um, oftentimes because you see them very often, you get to learn a lot about them in their, in your lives, so. One thing I definitely would like to see is to have more training for teachers in terms of mental health resources, in terms of, you know. How to respond to different students if they come to you, different problems, how to effectively be there for your students, how to be a person. Have a person that can actually say, yes, I'm open to any student coming to talk to me after school. Or, you know, before classes, you know, being that shoulder to cry on. Just because the role of the teacher isn't just to teach, at the end of the day, it's to inspire, it's to help. And it's to, um, and it's just to help students grow into the people that they are in the future. The best way that they can. The mental health is just a very important way of just doing that.
Thank you, Janelle. Does anybody else want to jump on that one? Okay, we'll move on then to Dominic. Dominic, college and career readiness is one of the requirements for a student to graduate in Maryland. How do you think Frederick County Public Schools should assess if a student is truly ready?
I think something that definitely comes into play when talking about this is the availability. Of uh, courses that relate to certain career paths that students may want to go on, and so I think. Using this um, as a way kind of to assess student performance and just looking at student data over the course of um. Their four years in high school prior to graduation would definitely help um. Provide guidance on the track to uh, college or a career.
Anybody else want to get on that one?
Uh, yeah, I'll answer that.
Okay, Jacob, this is your last uh, response one then.
Uh, then I'll hold off.
Okay. Moving on then to Quinn. Quinn, testing, so much time is spent on testing. How can the schools address this challenge and still remain accountable that we're teaching and kids are learning?
That is a great question. I think one of the things is F C P S does not have full control on. If we're testing and if we're not, so that's hard already as it is just for the. Um, members of the board to make that decision, but I definitely think that. They should still stress the importance of having testing and that students should be ready for testing, so that way they do well. But there should be more focus on learning the material to understand it and not just learning the material. So that way you can do well on a test. I think that's something that students really struggle with is. They understand it for the test, but for the rest of their life, they don't really understand it, so really focusing on understanding it forever and not just. To get the A on the test.
Anyone like to take that one? We have time for about two more questions after this, so you know, you want to use your chances you can. Uh, we'll now move on to Sam. Um, Sam, there are many opinions about what role virtual and distance learning should play when we return to schools in a normal setting. What do you see as the role of the virtual learning in the future when we are back to normal?
Yeah, it's a good question, um. I know there's a lot of talk about uh, no longer having snow days, um. Personally, I'm not sure how I feel about that, uh, thinking back to when I was in elementary school, middle school, I don't know if I would. Appreciate uh, seeing snow outside when I wake up and then having to sit down in front of a computer. But um, that is something I would definitely look forward to uh, talking to students about and getting the general opinion and. How the rest of the students in the county uh, see virtual learning. Uh, so far, I'll say um, opinion hasn't been great, especially compared to in-person school. Um, a lot of kids aren't fans of online school, however, uh, I think doing it. Irregularly throughout the year would, would make it uh, give different reactions, but that's something I would be open to uh, discussing with the student body.
Thank you, Sam. Jacob, you want to go?
Uh, yeah, I will, so, I mean, of course, sustained virtual learning has had a major impact on, on educational quality as well as. Mental health and other issues, you know, you're missing the biggest, a big aspect of diverse social interaction, you're also missing a big. Aspect of hands-on, interactive content, and this is certainly detrimental uh, to most students. But uh, adversely, there's also been many students at certain periods, like I say, not necessarily sustained virtual learning. But it has uh, provided the opportunity for students to uh, work at their own pace, set their own schedules, and this has been incredibly. Positive thing, uh, it's allowed them to explore their interests and other uh, uh. Other interests, like I say, and, and other. Full in uh, snow days if we were so to go down that route, but uh, I might agree in that students, students might protest that. Uh, including myself, but also things like if a student sustains an injury, I mean, instead of having to hobble around school with like a crutch or something. You just work from home, right, or, or illness, other iss- other issues like this. I mean, those could seriously be addressed by having a virtual platform as well, uh, that, that goes beyond Frederick County Virtual School, but is integrated into. Uh, the education of every student in F C P S. So uh, basically, I think uh, sustained virtual learning uh, can be detrimental, but used uh. Uh, but used sparingly could be very impactful.
Thank you. Okay, then, we're on to, this will be our last question, and this one's Jacob. Uh, what are your thoughts on competency-based education, C B E? Is it a good option for students or not?
Uh, to, to be honest with you, I'm not sure exactly what competency-based education is, uh, uh, could you elaborate?
Um, competency-based education is a program where you are showing you, you demonstrate your competencies on basic things and progress through each individual level. It's being introduced, I believe, at Frederick High School in Frederick County, um, so it's a program that the school system is currently looking at.
Yeah, sorry, I, I know it by another name, but yeah, I think that's incredibly uh, beneficial for students, as I said. Making sure that uh, education is tailored to your individual needs is incredibly important, and as I was addressing in terms of uh, virtual options. Uh, for student educational experience, something like that would be incredibly impactful for them to uh, learn at their own pace. And not either get stuck behind, right, or, or uh, you know. Or go, go much further ahead and then have to wait to catch, for the other students to catch up essentially. So that would be a great program. I know I've done that uh, throughout middle school in certain units of classes, and it was incredibly. Uh, uh, beneficial for myself and many other students, so I think that would be a great program to ex- expand throughout the county.
Okay, real quick, we'll get the people that want to go, we'll go with Quinn first.
Um, I think this type of learning is very important because each student is individual. And each stu- student has their um, different ways of learning, and this would really tailor to that. And also with students' mental health, it can be stressful to feel like you're being left behind or. You're not smart enough or anything like that, but really it's just because we all have different styles of learning, and this would really. Enable kids to feel more confident about themselves and um, just really learn to how they need to.
Thank you, Quinn. Janelle.
Yeah, competency-based learning, um, yeah, idea of it, it's an awesome thing when you think about it in the grand scheme of things. Um, whereas, you know, we do live in a society where a lot of times you're being pushed to go as far and as, do as best as you can. A lot of times it can feel very daunting for my students, a lot of stress can be placed upon students to do well, whereas. They're not, you know, whereas they aren't able to do well, um. With a, with competency-based learning allows students to really work at their own pace, like it's kind of similar to how we've been doing with online learning currently. Um, allowing students to work at their own pace allows them to achieve the most that they can as possible, because it allows them to. Work to the extent of their abilities and know that at the end of the day, that working to the extent of their abilities means that they work, you know, that they did the best that they can. So um, yeah, competency-based learning, it sounds like an amazing um, thing that we definitely do need to implement. Not only in Frederick High School, definitely into more schools, into our county, in our county, so just so that we can. Allow for more students to have, you know, greater control over their education, as well as just simply have, you know. A better school life when it comes to um, different classes or being compared to other students, just so that we can ensure that. Every student is being taught about their ability.
Thank you, and Dominic.
As someone who personally um, has been experiencing the competency-based education um, experience for the past two years. Um, I think I speak for many students at Frederick High, um, when I say that this has been an amazing experience, um. Not only does it allow students to assess their mistakes, however, it allows teachers um, room to uh. Reteach the information and making sure that they're helping students um, progress rather than giving them a grade on a test and that being final. And not explaining to them where they ma- made a mistake, and so I would say this is definitely crucial. Um, to a good education, and I would like to see this implemented in other schools across the county.
Thank you, Dominic, and thank you all for your honest and thoughtful answers to tonight's questions. Uh, we will now have our closing statements from the candidates. A reminder, each of you will have one minute for your statement, and we'll start again with Missa Jim.
If elected as your next student member of the Board of Education, I want to ensure to you all that all the students, that the students are those who matter to me first and foremost. I want to be the one that you can confide in, trust, and most importantly, believe in to get what you need done. We can all work together to make this county a better place for us all, and that is my promise, my promise to you that I will ensure a better future for us all. The parents, the teachers, and most importantly, the students. This isn't about one person, this is about a group effort among tens of thousands of people in this county to make sure that F C P S is the place to foster greatness. Success and happiness for us all. Thank you, and vote Janelle Jim for your next student member of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Janelle. Now we move to Mister Phillips Moore.
Tonight, we have heard the many issues that affect F C P S students and the solutions that have been suggested by each of the candidates. Now it is up to you to decide who you want to be, to be your next student member of the Board of Education. With my platform of addressing social injustice and how it affects education, the stigma of mental health. As well as student member of the board voting rights, it is clear that I have a platform that reaches all students. If you'd like to see the change that we deserve, vote Dominic Phillips Moore for S M O B, and together we can make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Dominic. Uh, now we'll hear from Miss Schultz.
Students, as S M O B, I will do my best to get to know each of you and to represent you during the Board of, at the Board of Education. With my platforms, mental health, social justice issues, and going back to school safely in person, I hope. That this, I hope that these will help you get through this year and through many years. I hope that I will be able to represent you as best as I can, and that as S M O B. I will be the best, I will be the best representation of the students' voices. Please vote for Quinn for S M O B.
Thank you, Quinn. Uh, we'll now move on to Mister Stars.
Uh, I'd just like to thank everyone uh, watching live and anyone watching this after the fact. Um, I remember in sixth grade seeing the advertisements for the twenty sixteen student member of the board election and thinking, oh, this is something I want to do. So it's pretty cool now that I'm here, able to give my picture a smile, so thank you for the opportunity to do so. Now I've just got to win. To retouch my platform, while my biggest concerns are invested in mental health awareness and social injustice, my ultimate priority as S M O B would be the accurate representation of the student body. If I'm given the chance, I'll make it my goal to be the most involved S M O B the county has had, because that's what students deserve. So thank you again for being here, tuning in, and good luck to all the candidates. Vote Sam Stars.
Thank you, Sam, and we close now with Mister Winter.
Yeah, so, look, I have a lot of opinions, I have a lot of ideas, I have a lot. In the county, but none of that matters uh, without the students' interaction, and so, uh, and, and their opinions on the issues as well. So as S M O B, I would foster an environment of meaningful and productive dialogue through interaction with the students and through rela- relaying. Their opinions on the issues that we face to the Board of Education. As I mentioned, I want to generate a feedback loop, the best possible fe- feedback loop. Uh, to make sure that students uh, can have their voice heard and can have actual solutions uh, actuated. Uh, I, I'm gonna, I want to determine aggregate and individual opinions and form the most cohesive and coherent uh, response that I can bring to the board. Uh, and I want to be forward-thinking and solutions-driven, uh, and, and in collaboration with the forty-four thousand students of F C P S. I think we can affect real change that they want to see. Uh, but one thing that I'll just say is that, you know, this is not something that uh, you, you should just vote for whoever you see. And then never, never think about it again. This is not procedural, and this is not just legislation on paper. This is your lives, this is your education. And together, uh, we can do something about it and we can make it the best you want it to be. So vote Jacob for S M O B. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. And thank you to everyone for joining us this evening and for tuning into this broadcast. Um, it will be available in the future on F C P S media and will be found on the webpage for both F C P S and F C A S C. We thank you all for coming in and joining us to support student leadership and student representation in Frederick County schools. Have a good night and thank you.